Welcome everybody to the Village of Brianbeck Planning Board Meeting for June 20, 2023. The first item on the agenda is Zephyr 28 East Market Street, a proposed signage. Do we have, oh. Do we have a...
Yes, I gave my packet to Ryan.
We have it, yeah, we... The hard part of this was, uh... It's a round sign.
That's correct.
So it's like pi R squared to figure out the square footage of the round sign.
Yeah, I think it's 18 inches by 18 inches.
Right. I think the calculations were done successfully.
This time, yeah.
So, how much room do they propose signage is 1.089 square feet times two, which is two square feet and eight?
It's exactly the same as we did two and a half years ago. And we got an approval then, but the sign never got found. So therefore, because we went past the expiration...
We're coming back.
We're back to ask again for that round sign.
Can we have a picture of the sign down there?
Yeah.
Yeah. Whoops. Oh. Well, yeah. The 18-inch circular sign, which comes to whatever 1.68 square feet. So, does any of the board have any questions about the sign? What color is it?
It's a pale sage green. A pale sage green.
Okay.
It's, yeah.
And black letters?
With black lettering. It's exa-, yeah.
It's hanging off the existing bracket?
Uh, we have the bracket, yes. It's a black metal iron frame, triangular bracket.
What bracket is not there yet?
It's more than seven feet off the ground?
Yes.
So where on the frontage is it gonna be hung?
Um, we're proposing, as you look towards the store, the upper right-hand corner. The very, where the black building begins, yeah, right, basically right there. And however, Howie said that, you know, if there's any opposition to that, we could hang it one column over, further to the left, and hang it above the metal scones, we can hang it there. We don't want to block any other businesses' signs. I don't think that the purple building, I think they're, they do have a perpendicular sign, but it's not very close to Zephyr.
I'm sorry, so were you saying it would be hung on this column?
Well, we're proposing to hang it on the far right, right there.
Do you think people would be confused and think that that was the entrance to the purple door?
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
No, I don't think so. This is what the store looks like now. We painted the front with black, and then you can see our signage is very similar.
Zephyr, Zephyr down at the bottom of the list.
Mm-hmm.
And that's staying, no window signs?
Exactly the same, nothing has changed.
I don't think Perry Winkles has a sign.
No, they don't have a...
They don't have a perpendicular?
No.
I didn't remember seeing window signs, but not a...
This goes like that. Oh, okay. So there's no perpendicular sign there, but I was thinking maybe more over here.
It would look better on the car.
Someone's gonna think of the purple stuff. You know, it says Perry Winkles, they might...
Well, there's a door right there.
Right.
That goes to the second floor.
I know.
Yeah, that's probably a better, I think it's a better spot. Do you...
Are you proposing lighting on the sign?
No, no lighting.
No, there's no lighting.
Okay.
Oh, that scones will help light it up maybe, I don't know. Is that more different?
So these, these here, this is Zephyr, these are the two window signs that are included in the...
You have the calculation, those are staying.
Okay.
All right.
Is that good?
Yeah, I think so.
And it's within the allowed square footage.
Right here.
Another question I have is a circular sign is hung by one spot on the bracket?
No, actually, that was just, I guess if you say that was, it's, it's gonna be attached...
Two spots.
By two chains.
All right, yeah, 'cause if it was one, it might do this to the wind.
It's gonna be attached with two chains.
Okay.
It'll be, it'll, yeah.
The bottom will be above seven feet.
Oh, above seven feet, yes, absolutely.
I'm okay.
Jeff?
I'm good.
Okay, you have a motion to approve the new sign for Zephyr 28 East Market Street.
We'll make that motion. Second, John.
John, second, John. Those in favor?
Aye. With the condition that it's hung above seven feet.
With the condition it's hung above seven feet.
Absolutely.
Because we get a lot of promises, and then we get a lot of signs that are...
Well, I will promise you, and I will keep my promise.
Okay.
And we have people putting planters under it, so we will have to walk around and get it on the sign. Seven feet's good. All right, thank you, good luck.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Okay, thank you.
It's a nice looking store.
Thank you, I do the win, I was the manager, I retired, now I just do the windows on Friday.
Yeah. All that French there is great.
And I...
All French and Spanish.
Yeah, looks really good. Am I done? Can I go?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You can go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The second item on the agenda on the new business is Michael Hogan, 51 Violet Place, positive or negative recommendation to the ZBA for a side drive variance. We have to look at the pictures, are they here?
Okay.
We should have chairs or something. People can sit out, you can sit right there, I guess. As I understand it, there's a Bilco hatch.
Uh, no, no Bilco hatch.
And you want, that's what... The proposed addition is supposed to be to cover a hatch?
No, we need a totally new structure, or add-on to the house addition.
No? I thought you said it was to get basement access.
Mm-hmm. Um, do you have the construction drawing in there too?
No, I can't, I can't make a copy of that, I can share this with them.
Yeah, I guess if they want to look at it, it'd be easier. No, it would be like a, just a new staircase, so we have a basement staircase right in the center of the house. We just want to relocate it within that addition, so it would be like an interior staircase, but like inside access from the house to get there.
So there was no interstate hatch? You're gonna dig a hole and put it in the staircase?
No, our basement stairs are inside the center of the house, it just kind of makes everything all boxy, so we want to try to move those somewhere else if we can.
So... So the staircase going right here?
Yeah.
Oh yeah, there is no hatch there now. So you're gonna dig, dig a hole and go down?
So this is your, these are the photos you provided here, this is the fence.
It's looking towards the neighbor.
Yeah, to the neighbor. I actually swung by there and got a few shots myself today. So right now, this is the shed that's shown on the drawing. And are you proposing to eliminate this window?
Yeah, yep. Yeah, we build over that.
So one-story addition?
Yes, one-story.
Yeah.
That's gonna shorten the parking area.
My question is, we have, in our code, we're not allowed to have the required parking in front of the front plane of the house.
How many cars can get back there now, and how many cars will get back there after the...
Now we can fit three, after, if we could build this, it would be two.
But where will the two, will the tail end of the car be in front of the house, the front plane of the porch, or behind it? What's the distance between the addition, the proposed addition, and the front of the porch?
John, we went through this, are we talking about the front plane of the house? Is it the porch railing, or is it the actual facade of the house itself is the front plane of the house? I thought the front plane of the house was the height of the building. In other words, this is the front plane. Couple of questions I have while we're looking at that. What you're suggesting then is to put an addition on the house only three foot nine inches from the property line?
Correct.
So that would bring, that would bring this extension out to probably in between these two garbage cans here.
And how long is it? How much, how much is it cutting to the driveway?
A little, less than six and a half feet.
No, I meant towards the street.
It's about nine and a half feet long.
Is there any measurements on here? Twenty-six?
Good. So we need the measurements between the proposed addition and the front of the house, not the front of the porch.
So it's...
That's the survey, it just shows the edge of the addition to the boundary line, which is what the variance would be for.
Yeah.
There's no number everywhere.
It is the front plane of the house, not the porch.
Yes, that's right, the front of the house. So, I don't, I don't even know if you can get two cars in there.
And this is pretty, I mean, this is about enough space for somebody to walk down. So, just some initial thought on that. What you're proposing is an area variance, not to be confused with a use variance. Typically, for an area variance, typically, there's some hardship involved that, that needs to be resolved. And it needs, it needs to be that there was no other way to do this, pretty much.
That's not true, exactly.
Okay, go ahead, John, you're the...
An area variance is to take into account the benefit to the applicant if the variance is granted as weight against the detriment to the health, safety, welfare of the neighborhood or community. So it's really a balancing test between the benefit to the neighborhood versus the benefit to the owner. And there are some other things, but those are, that's the critical one. The other ones can be weighed as part of it, whether it's substantial, whether it's self-created, whether... So...
I mean, I look at that thing, I see, not knowing the house, the potential to put it here. You wouldn't have to ask for anything, I don't think. Or put it here, then you're not dealing with the driveway.
Yeah, we thought about a lot of that, just, it's kind of hard to explain, but uh, inside the basement, that bottom corner you were just pointing at, that's right where our water heater is and air handler unit, and then on the side of the house, on the bottom, towards the bottom of the page, we have, pretty sure every water line in the house runs along there, and then our oil tank is over there. So, and then the front corner of the house near the top of the page is where our main electrical panel is, so that corner where it is now is really the only spot where there's not, would be a ton of utility interference.
So there's nothing in here that shows you the length of the side of the house, and also the width of that building as a percentage of the length of the house, and if you can get two cars back there. You don't know how wide the addition is, is that like six feet, eight feet?
Six and a half feet.
Wide. I'm talking about, I'm talking about the fence side.
About nine and a half feet.
Nine and a half feet. Or staircase.
It's like a dog-like staircase.
Yeah, the, the point that I was thinking of before, John, was section 120-51, IMB, one, where it says for area variances, you have to consider whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. 120-51, the...
Yeah. Yeah, but the, the basic test of an area variance, lawyers are around, right? Is that it's, it's the balancing act between benefit to the community versus the benefit to the owner. Those other things can be taken into consideration, but that's the basic. So you can take, I mean, the ZBA has the ability to take those into consideration, but there's no requirement for a hardship, is what I, I think that's, you have to prove hardship under the use variance.
So you're not gonna enter from the back door, you're going out to where the window is, go down, make a U-turn, and then go down into the basement. I don't have any pictures of what this thing's gonna look like.
There's our construction drawing a little easier.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So you're gonna enter from the house?
Correct, yeah, so, yeah, sorry.
Right, bring a scale.
You're coming down, I see, so you, that's what you're gonna do. You're gonna come from the first floor of the house, out through where the window is, make a U-turn, and come down into the basement.
Correct.
Okay. So you just had a entrance from the driveway, it would be a lot smaller in that building.
Right.
Okay, so how much did the building was so big, now it's big. Okay.
So this is eight and five, and we can two times add this.
A little scale.
One time I can't bring my scale. Architects? Thank you.
Good man, Michael.
Sixteen feet between the front plane of the house and the front of the... So that's only room for one car. And even under current conditions, it's not two cars probably.
That's the bait, John, sixteen feet from here to here?
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks for having me.
Yeah, sixteen feet. That's the problem I see, is that you're pushing the car out into the front yard.
And with the three cars, you probably have a car push that into the front yard today.
Yeah, a lot of people have their cars parked beyond the front of the house.
Yeah, but we're not supposed to approve two spaces that aren't behind the front of the plane of the house, that's in the code. So a lot of people are grandfathered, a lot of people park the way they park, but in theory, or according to the code, you're supposed to have two spaces behind the front plane of the house, because two spaces are required for a single-family house. So that would need thirty, thirty-six, not sixteen.
So, John, just for the process of moving things forward, either you guys don't want to move forward, or you guys would move towards a negative recommendation to the ZBA.
Yeah.
Because honestly, because the addition is not under site plan, the addition is for the variance for the ZBA to decide.
So, you guys have issued negative recommendations before.
Nobody has any questions, will someone make a motion for a positive or a negative recommendation for the area variance? John's the reading.
If we were to make a negative recommendation tonight, you would have, well, any option to go back to your drawing board and determine if there was some other solution that would satisfy your needs, but not inhibit the parking. Also, you put this structure here, yes?
That's if the ZBA agrees with you guys. And that's the condition that you're creating with the parking, that they agree with you.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't make the ultimate decision, we just make a recommendation, we can do a neutral recommendation or a recommendation any way we want.
Yeah.
Because the code says they have to come to us first for a recommendation, positive, negative, or neutral, and then that gives, and then we give reasons, and that's supposed to help make the decision easier or harder for the zoning board of appeals when it gets there next time, so...
One other observation I'd make is if this ended up going through, and that addition was to the house, it would pretty much eliminate the ability for someone who buys the house in the future to extend that driveway to park three cars behind the front plane of the house, or maybe even put a garage in the back.
Or you could move the driveway to the other side.
That's a possibility.
That's not for tonight. That's the future.
Yeah.
So I ask again, does someone want to make a positive, negative, or a neutral recommendation to the ZBA? I would make a positive recommendation based upon the fact that his water lines, oil furnace, oil tank, electric lines are in the area where I would have, like I said, suggested, but you can't put them there, which means he's only left with one spot, so... Having an old house, the ability to get into the basement is very important. And...
You mean, you mean they're in this area here?
That's what I was, I was just looking at that, but he's explaining his furnace, his oil tank, his water line.
That was our first idea, because it makes more sense, but that's right where our water heater is, so it'd be a lot of relocating, which is a lot of utilities.
Well, it shows to me on this construction zone drawing that the stairway is right there currently.
That's right.
So...
It goes down towards the center of the house.
And the water heater is up there. So couldn't you put it here and come down that way?
Uh, we have a, like pantry structure right there that's kind of hung off the side of the house, that would have to get removed. Something we wanted to try to keep instead of...
Yeah.
Do we have a second to Michael's?
I can't second.
I, I can't second that.
I can't second that, you guys.
I'll make a motion for a negative recommendation because it would eliminate parking behind the front plane of the house and force the parking out towards the street. And that the applicant should, our suggestion is that the applicant should look for a better location. But it's, it's not like they don't have access down now. If they can find a better one that, that doesn't block the driveway, or if they want to move the driveway, those were the options. But we, we can't recommend a proposed addition where it's proposed.
Yeah, and as the planning clerk, Ryan Doughton, mentioned, you have the ability then to go to the zoning board of appeals and appeal, and convince them otherwise.
First, we have to take a vote, do we have a second to John's proposal?
I'll second that motion, including John's conditions, statements, findings.
Let's have a vote on the positive recommendation.
No.
The negative recommendation, that's all right, and then we have one, so we gotta get all this down to Tim. All those in favor of the negative recommendation? Aye.
Aye.
I, three, and Michael?
Negative.
Is negative, did you get, or you, you want to look at Jeff's tape? Tim's gonna want this in great detail as to why Michael said yes, and why the three of us said no. That's why I'm wanting for what they do.
No, no, it doesn't work like that, Chair. So, Michael's positive recommendation, that failed, because there's no second. And then John's negative recommendation went through because you three voted aye for it, and Michael voted, he voted against it, he was the one aye, so it's three to one.
Yeah, but I'd like to, we have the reasons why, which John was saying.
Yes, we'll get all that.
And what about Michael's comment?
That failed.
You can still note that in the minutes.
I'd like to note that in the minutes, but why, why he voted against us?
Okay, we can work on that.
We can work on that, so we, because, because the, the ZBA likes to have as much detail as it can of what our thinking was to help them in their thinking.
Correct.
They don't have to agree with us. All right? So I'm sorry about that, but, you know, good luck with, what are your next steps?
Maybe you can put a pantry where the stairs are on the interior. Want this back?
No.
Okay. Continuing business, Amalgamated Agricultural Associates, 6282 Route 9, opposed movement of Duchess County Historical Society from Poughkeepsie to the former home of Hobson's. Now, we're going to, the main purpose of tonight is to schedule a public hearing for, if you're ready, on July 20th, I don't know if you'll be ready or not. So you could make a brief presentation, but you're gonna have to make a major presentation at the public hearing to explain to the public, and then answer questions from the public at that time. So I don't need to do a lot of work tonight, John and I heard it, Michael and Jeff have not heard it yet. But we've said, it was a 20-page document you produced, and, and they may both got it, showing how it's gonna be used in there, so...
I'll make it brief. Okay.
And then we, and then they can ask you questions.
Sure.
Because they weren't there when we had the first pre-meeting.
Okay, so Victoria Polidoro here on behalf of Amalgamated Agricultural Associates LLC, which is here on behalf of the Duchess County Historical Society. The applicant is seeking a special use permit to convert what is now approved as a farm market cafe into a library, which is a much more, lower, lower intensity use. This is a permitted use in the district, but it does require a special use permit. No substantial exterior changes are proposed. As you all recall, the property is already undergone an extreme makeover. There's already parking, and lighting, and landscaping installed. There were a few modifications to this proposed site plan, mainly consisting of removal of the dumpster, removal of some of the picnic tables. We're keeping the bike ride. So it, it will look substantially as it, as it does right now. The applicant does propose to reuse the sign location, which, we went through this last time, the farm market, we believe the sign's grandfathered, and so we'll, we'll just be reusing that structure and facade, or, and if they want to change it down the road, they will come back in for separate approval for that. So tonight, we're asking that you refer the application to Duchess County Planning and Development, because it's located on Route 9, and that you schedule a public hearing for July. You're ready for the hearing.
Now, Ryan, what, what kind of processes have to take place? This property's been approved, we approved the farm stand, so everything, the septic water, it's all been...
For the most part, Chair, there's still an unresolved DOT permit that needs to be settled, and there needs to be a final walkthrough. Currently, they do not have a final certificate of occupancy.
Correct, but those are not needed to change the use on paper, that's needed to occupy the structure.
So it's gonna have to be recirculated to all the agencies, it's all...
It has to go back to DC Planning Federation because of how close it is to Route 9 and that.
It's a type-two secret action, so we do not need to recirculate to anyone at this point. We're reusing an existing structure, which is type-two.
Do you still have to go to county planning?
Yeah, we still have to go to county planning, so that's just a referral.
They have 30 days, we'll get, back get us to the next public hearing?
July 18th.
We can, I, I, I mean, they've seen this before, and we've already incorporated all of their comments into the site plan, the last time we were here. You know, there are street trees, there's parking.
But they have 30 days, and they, it's vacation season, they might take...
Dylan's pretty good, the one, the planner that oversees Brianbeck, he's, he's pretty good.
We're willing to take the risk that the public hearing has to be open and then continue if we don't hear back. The Duchess County Historical Society is in need of moving.
Yeah.
So, we would like to, to try and shoot for the 18th if possible.
But it's, make sure July, what's the exact date?
July 18th.
July 18th, okay.
Can you put the site plan up there?
We don't have the property site plan, we have this information.
You don't have, you don't have...
It should be on the same set.
It's on the same drawings, yeah. There you go.
Okay, you know.
I just wanted to ask about the sidewalk at the intersection.
Yes, so that is a change that we are working with DOT with.
So, right now, the way it was built is the one, the fork to the right.
Correct.
And this drawing seems to imply the fork, the fork to the left.
The, yes, the, without going into too much detail of the long back and forth with DOT and our contractors, there were a few hiccups when the sidewalk was installed, with property lines being measured from the white fog line instead of the actual property line, and all sorts of things. So, we will be going to the village board, asking them to take an easement on this little piece of property, and we are relocating it so that the crosswalk goes to a safe landing spot for someone who's in a wheelchair, because where it's proposed now, there is no ramp on the other side.
There's no ramp on where that lands either.
Well, that is a driveway, and DOT has said it would be acceptable for it to go into the driveway.
Okay, so it's not as shown, it'll go into the driveway as opposed to... That one takes it to a new ramp on the other side of the driveway.
I thought you were going to...
Yeah.
I'll double check with DOT. Oh, I'll double check with DOT and, and Christian because this has been in negotiation for a, a year with DOT at this point.
What is the holdup with DOT? The entrance is too small, too big?
No, 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 the entrance was built, the whole property's fine. The, the issue was that a small portion of the sidewalk.
Cut this out.
Was, was constructed not in the DOT right of way, partially on private property because the measurements in the field just, the measurements didn't work route, right? And it was constructed partially on private property, which then, you know, set in motion a whole nother set of issues. So we're working on fixing those. I will confirm with the DOT engineer what this is for the public hearing and make sure that it's accurately represented on this plans, pleasure sheet.
And otherwise, I think the property looks great.
Yeah, and it's more than ample, eighteen parking spaces, more than Bill would need for the use there. So, but we'll talk all about that at the public hearing and then we have to do site, but we could, I guess we could do it the same night. If the public's happy, we could approve everything on the eighteenth, but we'll see what happens.
Yeah, if the county comes in and there's no objections.
I've since spoken to some of the neighbors and they seem to be in support, so.
Yeah, as I said, is the important thing, contacting the neighbors, knocking on the door. You have a problem.
From what I gather, they seem to support it, but.
It's a lot less intense.
Why add the next meeting?
Right, it's important. When people come to the meeting, they come and support residents saying, I don't want that thing here, you know. Well, the first time they hear it is when they get the letter from Ryan, come to the public hearing, say, oh, I know all about that. I think it's great. So it's very important to knock on doors.
Not that you need to wait by general opposition for permitted use, but we hope to our part.
And we always, we tell that to everybody, you know.
That was better, because one of the things I'll say for the public hearing though is that, uh, the historical society, there are going to be all types of different historical societies, the Duchess County Historical Society, unlike Columbia County or Ulster or Green, where they house historical sites and earn money by having people come in and traffic. We've been, uh, much more like a library from the beginning in nineteen fourteen when we were formed, uh, the meeting in the Pleasant Valley Public Library headed by a librarian. So that these, the, the distinct aspect of this particular historical society is that it is oriented toward archives and books. And we have, I think it's all right to say in the, in the audience, some, uh, proprietors of important historical libraries like Arthur and, Arthur and Nancy Howey's library, Lifetime of Research, that could easily be accommodated in having this kind of space, which is a space we don't have in Poughkeepsie.
Yeah, so, um, like I said, I mean, we, we've heard a lot of this and, and you'll need to make, the, the thing we talked about, you know, we had the pre-meeting with John and, and myself to really give great detail to the audience and then get comments from the audience and then, um, we could potentially approve it on the eighteenth. So all the ducks are involved, it's order. Anybody have any questions from the board?
Have you gotten any blowback by moving the Duchess County Historical Society so far north in the county rather than being centrally located where?
Not really, uh, not that we've discussed it extensively, but the, the thing is, the distinct thing about a county historical society as opposed to a local one is that we're often connecting dots and having a presence elsewhere. So we last year had a big exhibition at Locust Grove for two months with a thousand people. Well, there's nothing stopping us based in Rhinebeck to have another exhibition at Locust Grove in Poughkeepsie for two months with a thousand people. You have to kind of go, so the truth is, is we have kind of the boring part. The library and archives part is not necessarily the most exciting part where everyone just wants to be every minute. So, uh, that's why I don't think that would be, that would be a problem.
It's also a very convenient location on Route nine and with dedicated grocery parking.
When you say it to people, they know exactly what you're talking about.
I think it's, it's a help for Rhinebeck, you know, but if I lived in Beacon or East Fishkill, I would say, well, it's a longer drive now, but they probably didn't drive to the one.
There you go. There you go.
Yeah, well, we, we have quarterly meetings of the county historical societies. Um, and we used to say, well, if it's close, I'll go. If it's in East Fishkill, I'm not going to drive all the way down it. And then COVID and every, we have all our meetings on Zoom now and everybody comes and we all talk and show stuff until what's happening in county. And we'll probably stay on Zoom because people don't want to drive that far.
But we just put nearly three thou, an index of nearly three thousand books online. I got an email from somebody in Australia. They pointed out a book. It was a unique book because it was hand research. I digitally scanned it and I emailed it to them in Australia. So library service, no physical.
Yeah, it's not local anymore.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions from the board?
This is a, probably can't be answered, but you know, my mother was Bill's job before that. She was county historian for ten years and record storage was her big thing. And, um, I think this is nice. And is there any kind of storage that keeps it really safe? I mean, I'm thinking of like Jefferson donated his library to become the Library of Congress and it burned in a fire.
Yeah.
You know, my mother was in charge of documents that Steinhaus said, put them in the basement of a building. The county owner had mud floors and they got ruined, you know, so I just, this is a newer building. It's been done over. I'm just thinking in terms of safety storage for these important records. Not that you do it, but you know, I wouldn't want to.
Right.
Wouldn't want a fire and then the sprinklers ruin everything or, you know.
Right, and I guess, you know, it becomes a question of expense ultimately if you had a completely fireproof, uh, building, right? So you take steps where you can, like we, all our shelves are metal, all our map drawers are metal, uh, things like that. So you, you kind of do as, you go as far as you can.
Doesn't the Department of Education also oversee your collections policy and you'll have to update it?
They do, yeah.
Because you have, you have a region.
We have a, a charter, right, yeah.
Charter, right, so they, the state, because the state is very concerned about cultural resources and objects, they, um, oversee historical societies and organizations. And so they are likely going to have to review your collections management plan and an update to it, um, for this particular facility.
They will, they, they can review it, um, I, and I think it's fair to say this relocation would be safer in a lot of ways than what's happening in Poughkeepsie.
Yeah.
All right, I need a motion to schedule a public hearing on July eighteenth.
I'll make that motion. I'll second that motion, Jeff.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have to do anything?
Motion to refer to Duchess County Planning?
That's what I was going to ask.
Well, you don't usually vote on that.
No, it happens automatically.
So, don't you have to find the application? It's fine with me, fine. So you'll send it, Ryan?
We're not the town, Victoria.
You know, every community is different.
All right.
Thank you.
We're done with our chat, thank you.
And you'll take care of all the notices?
Ryan will send a notice, everybody with the next number of feet, I'll get a notice to come. But it's good if they get the notice. Oh, I already know about that, that's good.
Yeah.
It helps.
It does.
So everybody to come and see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, um, did we have any, any more minutes to vote on? Not yet.
I know May sixteenth was out there. I think the last time we were here, I think everybody was looking at it and not everybody was too sure if they were ready.
Okay.
Yeah, we might as well wait until Darren gets back.
Okay.
Okay. And I didn't look at any new meeting minutes because I didn't think I was going to be here today.
I know I have an announcement, uh, just a reminder for the record, um, that, uh, the planning board has amended their summer schedule. Uh, and as we heard tonight, you'll only be meeting once in July and once in August. And those meeting dates are July eighteenth and August first. And then we get back to our regular schedule in September.
Anybody have any other comments I could just talk about?
I have one last thing. Uh, we were contacted by Timely Signs today, um, and I've circulated to the board. Nuventz Health, Northern Duchess, wants to modify their emergency department sign. From the looks of it, they want something as big as sort of the Saznov Pavilion size lettering above the, uh, portico or outcrop there. What is the board's feeling on that?
Do you want them to come for site plan or do you think it's something that can just be handled with a sign application?
Well, could we see, but is there a large emergency sign or on?
It's large.
On the street or on the building?
On the building.
Don't, don't we have to do anything like that in terms of amending the sign?
That's, that's with, I mean, I don't know if it goes as far as them needing a variance because.
I'm suggesting.
They're, you know, still in the residential district. They have no hospital district, so.
I think it's, in the past, we've done that. We've done sort of minor additions where it didn't change any signs by a sign permit. But anything that was going against the dimensions or changing dimensions had to go to the ZBA and we had to do a recommendation and so it's a multi-step process, I think. That's how I remember it.
If we go to Paul Kane with what they want to propose is good and he'll explain to us what they want to do and then we can make some decisions.
Yeah, but I think he should probably know that it might very well need a variance and.
I informed them that.
Okay.
So they're just, right now, they're in the paperwork stage of things. So it's the feeling of the board that they should just do a full net of paperwork and come to you guys on the eighteenth.
For a recommendation.
Of July, okay.
Okay, and what, what slide was that for?
This is for their emergency department. They have, I guess, someone has donated quite a large sum of money and they are naming the emergency department after them.
Oh, so that's the reason.
Oh, that's why. Two fellows comes out.
They can't just put a plaque inside the door?
No, no, this is, like I said, this, this is like Saznov Pavilion of a size.
You have a long name?
Uh, I think it's the husband and wife's name.
Oh, boy.
Together with, with, with their last name.
Is it Smith or is it some giant twenty-letter name?
It's.
Well, like we say, have cool, get, get some stuff together and come to us for a chat.
I can circulate some proofs that they've already sent.
And most hospitals have a giant red sign on the side of the road with a big red arrow, but.
It's not that extreme, but it's definitely, it's bigger than what's existing.
You going to renovate the emergency room?
I, I know there's some work going on inside there, but other than that, um, not sure.
At some point, we should know what they're up to. Because they came and they said, well, they wanted to have parking behind those buildings on Route nine until they build a new parking lot. And John went to them and said, wait a minute, we met with Gary and, and Colton and we spent the whole summer working on this plan and then Nuventz bought it, the plan went down the drain. And if they have some plans, we should know before it's the last minute.
They haven't built that parking behind that.
As far as I know, they never pursued. It sounds like, you know.
Thompson House is closed now. What are they doing with Thompson House?
Rumor has it they were trying to get into an outpatient sort of facility.
Well, if Thompson House were eliminated, that could be a really big garage down the hole. Because that's what, that's what John had worked on, that you could have, it's, it's a perfect spot halfway down Montgomery Street to enter on Montgomery Street, go halfway down, enter into the second level and go all the way down to the bottom of that big gap and then go right in and have no ramps, a lot of parking. I think John worked out like three hundred something parking spots and then they walked away. So, but they should keep us informed.
So we can't speculate.
I know.
At this point right now.
Okay.
Um, so whenever they're ready to come see us, I'm sure they'll come to see us.
Yes. Okay.
Any resolution or progress on the department store antenna?
Ken is drafting something to be sent to whatever T-Mobile contact we can, we can locate. And hopefully they'll be responsible and figure out when they can.
Cause there's no proof that we, uh, that was ever approved.
Uh, Ken felt going down the route that because none of the permits were ever closed out, there's no certificates, that, um, it's easier to enforce that end to get them in front of you guys than going the other end of figuring out what happened twenty-plus years ago.
Okay. Lydia, what's, this company's going to run fiber?
So the proposal was, um, we didn't agree to anything other than to look at an MOU. But yeah, they're, um, it's fiber optic and, um, the idea is they would run it down all eleven miles of village roads and drop little weigh stations in front of each property. And if people want fiber, they can pull it in. And it'll be underground.
Yeah, because they have a machine that's like, I don't know, a one-inch blade. I mean, it's, it's about six feet high, but it's a one-inch blade. It just cuts a little groove that cars can even drive over. Because we did it in Brooklyn at the college I worked at and we ran fiber up to all the campus buildings along J Street, you know, the main street of, of downtown Brooklyn and it wasn't, didn't bother anybody.
Yeah. That's the idea.
Would residents have to pay to have it hooked up inside, trench it to their house?
Not, well, not unless you, from what we understand, not unless you want it for more than.
Two thousand.
Two thousand feet.
Two thousand feet.
They, they're going to make you pay if they, if it's longer than two thousand feet.
That's not a problem.
I want to qualify.
Yeah, exactly. So, so nowhere in the village has that problem. But yeah, and it doesn't cost anything other than just the monthly service that you would sign up for with them.
That'd be good. Any cable we start with, of course, now we have a buried cable and we have buried water pipes. So now we have to stop, be like the city, remember where is everything? Especially Manhattan needs to have zippers installed so they can just open up the streets.
I know, right?
Do something and zip it closed again.
Yeah, well, we're, as you know, we're in the process of, um, sort of fine tuning our maps on water and sewer. And everything else is above ground, so this would only be the third thing that's on the ground.
They did say that they would, um, they would include, what's the word for it? GIS, some sort of like three D modeling data, so like you'd never forget where it is.
Yeah, they would, they would give us the map.
Because again, you don't want to do it the same side of the street as the water main.
Although this isn't that deep.
It's not, it's above the water main.
So it's.
If the water main breaks, they have to cut the fiber.
Right.
Forgot that was the problem.
But you can cross over is what I'm saying. You know, you wouldn't land in the same trench or above the same line, but you could cross over sewer lines without having.
Yeah, it's like, it's low enough that it doesn't get in the way of resurfacing roads and it's high enough that it doesn't get in the way of water lines.
Yeah, because in Park Slope One, the, uh, water line ran up the one side of the street. The gas lines ran up another side of the street. Con Edison ran up another side of the street and the sewer pipes were in the middle of the street. So everybody had to keep track of where these four pipes were going so they wouldn't, you know, cut somebody else's pipe when they had to fix a water main leak or put a new water main in someone's house and not, make sure it goes underneath.
Yep.
The, uh, gas, especially the gas and the electric lines.
Yeah.
We don't have that problem, but only a, it's our first line.
But the thing is, it's a redundant system too, so if they cut it here, then it's redundant.
Comes back the other way.
Comes back around the other way.
That's good.
It's better than overhead wires.
Anything's better than overhead wires.
Nice.
Actually, in Park Slope, they ran the fiber, there was fences between my backyard and the next guy's backyard on the next street and they just ran the fiber above a fence sign. There were telephone wires back there too. I forgot about telephone. They run those through the backyards, fiber and telephone. So you, you didn't have five or six things in the street. You only had four. And you had the other two in the backyard, telephone lines and fiber.
Oh, my God.
Technology is, I was hoping they'd mount something on top of Village Hall and we'd all get wireless modems at five G.
Well, five G, five G has to show up. We have the regulations. Now they just have to show up.
Yes, with those refrigerators on every corner.
I mean, they're smaller than that. Aren't they smaller than that? They're smaller than that.
Grant was up at Arms about how big they were going to be. I don't know. They put new lights in front of the Beacon Arms and I thought this is high tech. And they put a box like this big on the pole. They said, don't we, what about microcircuitry? And then someone told me the next year, they started to do it wirelessly, no digging. So, so they, they communicate with the lights on the other corners, Wi-Fi. So they, they communicate with the lights on the other corners, Wi-Fi.
Oh, well, all, all of the lights that the village bought that were placed, so like we have all of the streetlights now?
That I love.
Yeah, they all talk to each other. It's wild. Like if one of them goes out, it pings a system somewhere. I didn't even, I didn't even know what technology is.
Unless somebody drives around at midnight with a pad making notes, you don't know they're out. And I, I would see, wow, it's dark on this street. What's going on? That light's out.
Yeah.
I love the new lights. I know Gary said someone complained they're too bright. But it's so, it's like daylight running at 6 o'clock in the morning in the winter.
Yeah, it's really nice.
It's made a big difference.
Yeah.
And I noticed there's not as many lights on the other part of the kill, you know, the south part. It's like the poor district of the, there aren't a lot of streetlights down there. Most of them run south and market and everything. It's like daylight running down Mowberry or Parsonage. But when you get over to the other side of the kill, like there's one light on top of Rockefeller, up, all the way up that hill and vines. They didn't care about anything when they put them in. It was covered in vines. And the light is like, and you can see it in the middle of winter, you can sort of see it. Because you can't see it in the summer when the leaves are out. It's like.
Yeah, streetlights in the village are ineffective because they're above trees. And so they're just lighting the treetops rather than the street.
In the winter, when you're running in December, January, the lights really hit the streets. Now, if you go out early, there's a lot of leaves, so the leaves go. But once in the middle of the winter, January, December, January, it's beautiful. It's like daylight.
So I need to send that an email, but I just wanted to remind you all that the vote for the historic district is next week.
You went, you went okay with your public hearing?
Yeah, there was one comment and it was basically someone who was just super confused. And so that cleared up. So we continued the public hearing because we were gonna make some changes to the legislation from, that Dutchess County planning suggested. But substantively, it's exactly what, what has been proposed.
It's finally done.
Yeah, and nobody said anything. It was wild. We've been talking about this.
We're gonna go with 1940. If somebody in the district.
1945.
1945.
And I have maps.
Somebody in the district is gonna go to, is gonna go to Ken and he'll look, ah, this is.
Yep, I have, I have two maps.
1960 house. I can, I approve this. It's a 1942 house.
They got it.
Has to go to us. So he's gonna make a determination. Be the sheriff.
I have three maps. I have the big pink blob, which is the new historic district overlay. And then I have a map that shows contributing, non-contributing up to 1945 and contributing, non-contributing up to 1970. So I'll make sure that you guys have all three maps.
The code says all new construction in the, in the bubble.
Yeah, in the, in the pink blob.
Like down from us, that vacant lot.
Yeah, you, you guys have site plan review over everything. Yeah.
Any, any new construction subdivisions?
Or excessive renovation or something.
Good. Good job. I'm happy it's finally gonna happen.
Yeah, and of course, we've already gotten comments of people saying, when are we gonna expand it again to include Mill Street? I was like, oh.
I asked Jennifer Bettsworth about that three years ago and started, and she said, it has to be contiguous, but they wouldn't approve it in all being. I said, well, why don't you go from Rockefeller, you know, up the hill to Mill and make those houses in the district? Then you'd have a connection, like a dog leg. She said, no, it's too hard. I said, what about Montgomery, all the way down to the original power station at the, at the kill? Which has been totally, picture windows, it's been totally destroyed now. But she said, no, the hospital destroys, that's, I don't ever get that estimate either. She's great. But she did the best she could.
Well, there we go.
It's good. That's great.
You can do individual houses.
Yeah. I mean, Elijah's house, the Better House.
We have, we have three of them. We have Elijah's house, Astor Home and the Maples that are on the.
Five.
And the Better House.
The Delometer House and then also the post office.
Yeah, but they're in the district too.
Delometer, Elijah's not. The Better House is not.
Better House is not and the, and the Maples isn't.
Right.
But Astor Home is now in it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Jennifer said you guys should look at the cemetery someday. And that, that's a really critical, a lot of famous dead people. And you should look at the cemetery someday and add to your storage.
That sounds like a project for Dutchess County planning. I mean, Dutchess County historical site, they're gonna be right across from it. Yeah, I'm excited. This has been something that's been on my list literally since I was appointed, so.
And I've stopped asking about it.
I know, I appreciate it.
We salute all your work.
We do.
I salute all of the volunteers who are helping with it. I feel like we just beat everybody into submission to this point, so.
Yes.
So we know what's happening with the Astor Home. Is there gonna be vacant buildings there?
I have no idea. We haven't heard anything. I doubt there will be vacant buildings there. I mean, it's all outpatient now, so, but.
What will happen to those resident halls?
Yeah, I, I do not know. I don't know.
Because they could be converted to housing.
They could be converted to housing, actually.
And the cities, you know, the village is desperate for housing. And they're already there. You can divide up those dorm rooms into apartments and have people live in the back.
I will.
How much space is back there, but it's gotta be somewhat substantial.
Yeah, I mean, you guys approved, that was all new construction, right?
Yeah, those were, those were actually. And they said, if you do this, we're gonna have a lower parking lot, we'll have enough parking. And then the next day, it was all up Route 9 and all down South Street. I don't know what happened. Anything on the broken center? I think that was almost like a dirty word. Anything happening with, nobody's talking?
No, I mean, the only thing I, I mean, we're in the middle of the secret process. We're getting all the information from. Our engineers are currently evaluating everything. Rumor has it they're, you know, they had a meeting with the library. I don't know what's going on with that.
I, I know there's, but that, but it's millions of dollars. Even if, even if they sell it in per cost or a slight profit, it's still, you know, if they want to knock down walls.
Well, the, the nice thing actually about projects like this is actually, this is where, you know, federal glut comes in. Pat Ryan actually has access to a lot of money for projects specifically like this. Bring a, you know, a high-traffic municipal use into a downtown area, rehabilitate the historic building. I mean, this is sort of like a clock, this is like a perfect example of stuff that the feds like to fund. You know.
Otherwise, they just spend all that money paving routes.
Right, yeah. Why would you wanna do that? So, so there's options for federal grants on that. You know, it's, I, I, I'm trying to stay out of it a little bit because I think either use is a, is a good use for it. I think we need, you know, ADA compliant apartments. I think we also would love to have the library in the middle of the village. So, you know, I, I think either way, it, it works out well, but.
Con Plan had a good discussion about it the other day at their last meeting in which they talked about trying to use housing and the library as an incentive on that property.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So that.
Like keep, keep the four houses and then use the building for something else, but, you know, I don't know. Like it's.
That library is not like Bill Jeffwood. That library needs parking.
Yes.
I mean, I already spoke to Jacqueline about.
Ideally, less parking if it's in the middle of the village, but.
Yeah, and there's a lot of street parking available on that block.
Yeah.
Because there's not a lot of, there's insufficient parking at the library now.
Right.
And I had a meeting with Jacqueline about, could she have some more parking if she had some tentative drawings?
Well, I do know that the library's created a subcommittee to look at their actual needs. Because apparently their old plan, which had that idea in it, that you, she came to you guys to talk about. That was a plan from before the pandemic and they almost have a brand new, almost everybody on the board of trustees is new. And so everybody was like, well, is this what we're still doing? Like, is this like a, is this a building that we still need? You know, like what's our current programming asking us to do? And so they're kind of taking a good look at everything from what I understand at the moment. So we'll see. Part of the concern with Brogan is it's 15,000 square feet, but only 5,000 per floor. And if the library extends to two floors, then they have to add staff. Because then you need, they need to have staff on each floor. So that was one of their concerns about it, but I don't think that's an insurmountable concern, but I do know that that was a concern.
They talked about us moving with them, so we're, we're just an interested party.
That would be great. Then you guys would be, you could walk.
I could, I could have a zip line. Jump out my bedroom window on a zip line and go.
Good.
Actually, the Brogan Center might be higher than my second floor window. I'm not sure. My head's stuck on the lamppost. Who knows? Because, you know, Bill's gonna get a spot and we were just.
Yeah.
Wondering what about us?
But they have a, a children's little library and somebody at the reception desk, they already have it. These two people on staff most of the time.
Right.
Biggest programs now are, are, are for children. They have a lot of children's programs.
Yeah.
And the popular thing is the book sale. Community loves the book sale.
And they write in the building.
And, and right, because it gets, it gets in the way.
Send that room back.
And they could have, in the ground floor, the book sale, the friends of the library, all this stuff. Because it always gets in the way of events and stuff when they fill up the library with books, which has no meeting rooms, no space. And the village itself has no, you know, when Steve Cook was gonna expand the library, I said, do you need more books? No, I wanna put the ground, we'd expand the ground floor to give you guys more space. And I want three or four or five meeting rooms.
Yeah.
It's like a small group of like 10 people wants to meet. They have to take up one of the.
Yeah, it would be like library slash community center almost, yeah.
They'd have to take up the whole building. And then the rumor mill says Elizabeth might move to the library. And then we could use Town Hall, which has a big stage, auditorium for plays, shows.
Or we could send the courts to the library. And then the town could expand into the court space and we could expand into the court space.
All right, there's a lot of, uh.
There's so many, there's so many options.
The little puzzle with the one hole, you had to move the one hole around.
I know.
You know, to move letters.
I know.
For a life well, we might get to see something happen. Might even get city community said that we built a course in the library to base three of the Thompson Masarela Park committee.
But if it doesn't happen, then all four entities are still stuck with bad spaces.
Right, yeah.
You know, the fire department, the town, the village and the library, all are bursting.
Yep, we are. Everybody's bursting, so.
So it seems to me there's just so many pluses.
There are no place to meet in here, no place to meet in Town Hall.
Arguments remain.
The only place you could meet is in the library.
Yeah.
They have rooms for groups and community groups.
I mean.
And those rooms are booked all the time now because there's only a couple of rooms there.
I mean, CO would actually be a great community resource, but it's not in downtown either.
Yeah, it's unwalkable.
No, it's unwalkable. No, it'd be a good spot for the library. And the neighbors would be not have a problem with a library.
I don't know. I, we have, we have not heard from the neighbors on that comment, on that idea.
Speaking as a neighbor.
Yeah, the neighbors, yeah, I'm a neighbor. I, I wouldn't have a problem with it, but yeah, I don't, I don't know how South Street feels about it.
I'd be thrilled.
I think a lot of people would be thrilled.
Yeah, because I think, I mean, that building looks like a library.
Well, it's institutional. It was built as an institutional building.
And it's great, especially we move with them because there's that giant gymnasium. And that could be made into an auditorium. The library always wants to have programs. And they're squeezed in these little tiny rooms. The library rooms emphasize this room. And that's not picking it up if you want to have 100 people come to something.
Yeah.
And the book sales, I think so. An auditorium can be, the gymnasium can be used for a lot of meetings and public meetings.
Like Morton does. They've got a nice.
Yeah, they have a really nice space.
They have a nice space.
Upstairs and downstairs. Downstairs space is huge.
Yeah, it's lovely.
We've had programs that the upstairs space is very intimate. It's got the stage. It's wonderful. And we packed it sometimes with 100 people, which we couldn't have done a local history room. So.
Yeah.
Everybody needs spaces. And Bill has programs and we have programs.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to have more, more community stuff going on in the community, right? We'll see what happens.
Yeah, I was gonna talk to the library director about it and just sort of see where her head was.
She's wonderful, the director. She's terrific.
I have a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Jeff makes it. All who are in favor?
I see you all happy, happy, watching July. I'm blowing fingers off.
Thank you all.
See you all for the public hearing.
Thank you. So.
Thank you, Lydia.
I don't know if you all heard, the ZPA denied the, uh, well, they, they stayed with the interpretation of the building inspector for the, that the house over on Prospect Street did not have road frontage, so.
Oh, that flag block.
Yeah, they upheld, they upheld the building inspector and basically said that we cannot, we cannot determine what is legally a street and what is not legally a street. And whether or not there's road frontage. They can only interpret village zoning law, so.
Okay.
So they have the option. They can, they have one or two options left on what they can do. But other than that.
Word adjourned.
Word adjourned.